We thank you, Father, for everything that you've given us. We ask that you be with us this evening, get us all back home safe and sound. We ask this in Jesus' holy name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at last, item number one is consider for discussion action designating bank signatories. At our last council meeting, Councilman Warren asked to be removed from the Citizen State Bank as a signator. And come to find out what we need to do is re-vote again on our bank signatories. So we're gonna have to go through the whole signature card again thing, and it has to be in the minutes so that we can take the minutes to the bank. So I would like a motion to designate the signatories as being Councilman Harrington, Craven, Morris, and Blackstone and myself. Do I hear a motion to that effect?
I'll make that motion. Second?
Second, okay. Any questions about this? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. What we're going to do now is recess until the workshop, the workshop is about to begin in just a couple of minutes, so we'll recess and pick up the meeting after the workshop. It's 4:28 right now.
So we're gonna run the workshop and then go into closed session?
Yeah, cuz that has to be a part of a meeting. It can't be workshop.
Gotcha.
And this couldn't be part of a meeting, or part of a workshop. That'd be separate. All right, it is 4:30 PM on March 30th, 2021, and I would like to call this meeting to order. We do have a quorum present. We are missing one council member, Councilman Craven, and he may show up or may not, but I'd like to proceed. Item number one on the agenda is council discussion of proposed street work and right-of-way What I was talking about earlier is, oh, Marion, good for you. We passed this $2 million bond a couple of years ago in order to be able to do, well, first of all, to have a match for the $8 million grant. And since the $8 million grant has gone over to GLO and there's no required match, then we still have about $1,200,000 in our bond account, so it's time to look at maybe doing, you know, getting, moving forward with some more roadwork. I called in Wayne Sweet. For those of you who may not know Wayne, he is with Gulf Coast, and they're the ones that did Derwood for us and did the project in the back. And in order to have some sort of an estimate of what it would cost to do this work, we called him in and asked him if he would do us a favor of, you know, running the roads that we were talking about and seeing what kind of estimate he would come up with. Do you wanna talk about this, Tommy?
Sure. Wayne and I went and drove some of the streets, basically all of Lakewood, from the entrance
No, well.
To Shanticleer. Right, from the entrance to the Water Development Board project, and then pick up there and go to Shanticleer. Okay? And then if you make a left on Shanticleer, around the tree, you hit Lakewood again.
Right here.
And we showed, looked at Lakewood all the way down to pass the dam on Camelot to 16th Street. 16th Street, we're around the curve right there. And then we came back up and went down Galahad, I'm sorry, Lakewood all the way to Galahad Dam, and then picked up on the other side of Galahad Dam, and that's a problem close to Galahad Loop, that that part has got to be reworked. It's not just an overlay there because we have to put a drain in.
Yeah, we're talking about right here.
Yeah.
As you get across the dam.
Right. And then the other part, well, basically, it's all of Lakewood.
Yeah.
Totally, all of Lakewood. And then we're looking at Camelot also, close to the entrance. Camelot, it's like the mayor says, you know, people come in here, they either go on Shanticleer or they come down Camelot to either go down Derwood or Charmaine South to get to the back. And so those are the main roads we were looking at, the main road we're looking at, and it's all on the bond fund.
Yeah, and Camelot, although it wasn't on the original map, it's like Tommy was saying, when people come into Ivanhoe, they either turn here or turn on Shanticleer, and they, you know, go out either toward the backside or all the people that
Later, your mic.
Oh. I forget. Need one of those. So, and the thing about Camelot right now is we're losing it. We get more and more potholes, it's getting, it's getting more and more damaged right now.
Which one that is?
Camelot is the one at the first stop sign, when you're coming in, that first stop sign, and it goes down here, right to the dam, to the community center. And like I say, it's, when people come in, they either turn there to get back here, or they go on up to Shanticleer and around that way. So as far as heavy traffic, those are the two streets that are most trafficked. Now, and I, David Marshall is sitting here, and I think he would agree with me that Camelot's suffering. And we can let it go until it's, you know, we can't do anything with it or just get it overlaid now. It's gonna cost a lot less now if we do something about it. The other thing that Tommy looked at was this section of
Charmaine East.
Yeah, Charmaine East, and that was on the map. What else did you guys look at?
Well, I think that's pretty much what we looked at right there.
Because the section here, what we talked about was from Shanticleer down to Jill's House, right here, down to Charmaine East, that's not bad. And it's not that heavily trafficked, because most people have already turned off. So that we could go ahead and wait for later, when we get our $8 million grant.
And also from Ivanhoe down to Camelot, right in front of City Hall, that road there is heavily traveled also.
Right here.
And there's, yes, and a lot of people live on that road too, so it
And that was on the map.
Need be done.
You know what I think would be really helpful, is if we had a, this was the original proposal, but if we had an updated map with, say, color codes for what's already been done?
Well, the only thing that's been done is Charmaine South
This has been done.
And Shanticleer.
What about these other roads down around, there's other roads that have been blacktopped.
Oh, well, that's, yeah.
Not by the bond fund, that's, the city's done that.
Yeah, if we had, if we had a consolidated map that showed the progress that's been made so far, in addition to the bond, we could keep separate maps but have
That's a good idea.
A composite of all the work that's been done
Right.
So that it can be a visual, a representation of
Yeah.
The accomplishments that have been gained so far.
In Public Works, they have done quite a lot.
Yeah, cuz we finished Derwood now, and I think it came from like there. We did more than half of Derwood this time, and then we went back and we did this portion back here, and I can't remember which streets exactly, and we did this one along the lake, and we did this one, I think.
There've been quite a few.
Yeah. Yeah, we've gotten a lot of work done this year. We got, we did over $750,000 worth of grant work. Well, let's see, we did $750,000 worth of bond work, and then we did $500 and some thousand dollars worth of grant work, and the other one, the Texas Water Development Board grant, we were not able to do yet because it got caught up in environmentals. Otherwise, we would've had about $1,500,000.
We're getting very close to the low-water crossing on Ivanhoe Drive, right?
Oh, yeah, that's what we're planning, that's what they're looking at doing, is going down to where that low-water crossing, the Texas Water Development Board project is gonna start. And then we pick up after that to, you know, go on up to
Shanticleer.
Shanticleer.
Yeah.
But I was also referring to the fact that our Public Works people have done quite a few of these other roads also with washout or
Yeah.
Grab or something.
Oh, yeah.
So that should be shown on there also.
Yeah, absolutely. We could use, I'm colorblind, but we could use different color codes for which parts have been done by the city, which parts have been done by a grant, which parts have been done by the bond money, but have a composite of all of the work that's been accomplished.
That's an excellent idea.
Sure is. Okay, one other thing that we didn't look at, but I went and looked at 27th Street the other day, 27th and 28th. 27th is the one that's in there. We did 28th Street a couple, three years ago, and it didn't work out too well, maybe four or five years ago. But there's, there's 38 people live on that part, that road. And that's the main road coming from back, if people come across to it. And I was thinking, you know, it wouldn't be bad to do that road also, but it might be a figure that we don't wanna go over, you know what I mean? Money-wise. But I was thinking, what I had thought, and this is not what the mayor thought or Wayne and I looked at, but I thought we could do 27th instead of Camelot. However, if we do that, Camelot will probably have to be reworked totally by the time we get around to doing it, which may be two or three years from now, so, I don't know, it's just a thought.
Did Wayne provide any figures for the roads that you looked at?
Well, that's what we're gonna talk about now.
Okay.
And I talked to Wayne just before the meeting and asked him if he could take a look at 27th Street and also Sir Cedric.
Sir Cedric.
Because David Marshall and I talked about a plan that he's working on to do Ivanhoe Drive East and West with our crew. And so I asked Wayne if he could look at those other two streets and that would, you know, to come up with what it would cost for that. Wayne, you're on.
Hold on just a second.
Oh, wait a second.
I did drive Sir Cedric yesterday also, and there's 16 houses on that street. To get to Wayne, back to Gilbert's Eight, and from Gilbert, back up to Lakewood, or Ivanhoe, rather, there's eight. So there's 16 houses on that street.
Okay. Wayne, would you like to talk about what you came up with as far as some estimates on this? And please use the microphone because we, the sound system.
Yeah, what I did is, you know, went there with Tommy and measured up everything, looked at the existing roads, and didn't see really any base failures, just, you know, old chip seals, some old oil sand, and kinda compared it to where we did right there in the back. And the only bad place was right there at the dam where Tommy was talking about, where we, you know, figured up
That's right here.
Using asphalt base when they done the drainage. And I went through, measured it all up, and used a, you know, a three-inch average on the road that looked good, you know, inch and a half of level, and it might take it all, might not, you know, and then have an inch and a half overlay, and through the bad area there, I used four inches. And, and pretty much, it probably take us about two weeks, and I went back and seen, you know, what your last estimate was, were just asphalt, and used that pricing, you know, with that asphalt where you had an existing contract. And what I figured, you know, is leveling and overlay, no striping or anything, just, you know, fixing what was there, and the original footprint of the road, not extending it, not anything else. And about two and a half weeks of work, it's plus or minus, I say 800,000, plus or minus 10% maybe, and there might be less, might be a little more. And that's, and that's about, a little over, about 8,000 something tons, you know, total.
Wayne.
Which is a lot of tons, but if you take the, what you had on the road that LD did for you, and use that estimate's what I went off of.
Okay, just to make it clear, to reiterate. You were talking about doing
Yeah, to talk about Ivanhoe down to where you talked about.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we went
Picking it up to Shanticleer.
And then we did Lakewood the whole way.
The whole way.
That little bit of Charmaine, and
This little bit of Charmaine East. Did you do, does that include Camelot?
Yeah, and that includes Camelot.
And also it is the little bit of, from Sir Robert Burns, Ivanhoe Estates, back up to Lakewood.
Yeah, Tommy wants to make sure he doesn't have a pothole to go over.
I got you. But, I mean, you know, that's, you know, pretty conservative figure, I mean, cuz it's hard to say what, but the roads are in bad shape because of the potholes, but there's no big base failures that I could see with what we're used to, the work we did out here, it's kinda comparable already.
So just, just for clarity's sake, what we're talking about here is, the work that we've done so far has all been mill it up, rework the base, and then come back in and put a
Well, not, no, in the, in the back, we kinda
With the, with the exception of back there, Lake Camelot area.
Once you mill out the base from what I'm thinking, you know, when you mess with the oil sand that's out here
Mm.
Or the chip seal, and you break that bond that's there
Yeah.
It's gonna expose other, you know, what's underneath it, is what I found.
Right, so what we're looking at is using the existing
Yeah.
Hard surface as
The base.
The base slash seal, and then going on top of that with an inch and a half level up to get the road flattened
That's right.
And or crowned again, and then an inch and a half on top of that.
That's right.
Okay.
Questions, comments? Come on, this is a workshop, everybody has an opportunity to talk.
Did you say that that estimate included that section of
Lakewood where that base failure is?
No, from Sir Robert Burns over to Lakewood.
This little section, yeah.
No, sir, I didn't measure that.
No. That was not included, Tommy.
That was another add-on I
Did you say that that figure included Camelot?
Yes, and included Camelot.
Included Camelot.
And Charmaine, yeah.
Well, we did skip, David, we did skip this section of Ivanhoe Drive, cuz that's what we talked about, it's pretty, pretty good shape, and it's not a lot of traffic.
Well, fair, what, I know that we had talked about having Charmaine East from City Hall here, back to Ivanhoe Drive, and then out, having that completely stabilized for the foreseeable future as part of our emergency services response
Right.
In the event that we're, you know, having this as a, as a central response area and things like that.
Right.
Of course, if we're doing Camelot, then it could go either way
Right.
As far as that axis.
Well, in this, in that section of road, right here
Mm-hmm.
That's not bad at all. It's, it's in good shape. That's why we thought the
Yeah, I went to the end of all the potholes where Tommy showed me, to where I got, you know, where it was pretty, it was pretty rough, and I went to the end of that, is what I measured.
Only Charmaine from
Yeah, Charmaine East, yeah.
Charmaine East, yeah.
Chuck? At Tristan?
Oh, that's true.
At Tristan?
Cuz that's pending.
Well, yeah, and you know how that might take a while.
Yeah.
But in the meantime, we could, you know
Well, I will say that that area, once you make the curve toward Tristan, that, where it makes kind of the curve to the left, that is a pretty good road.
Oh, the dam surface?
Yeah, well, not to the dam, just up to the curve. It looks pretty good. Then once you get on the dam portion itself, that needs to be reworked.
Tommy, are you talking about the area that if we raised that spillway up
Yeah, right.
The area that would get raised is maybe suitable to leave for the moment
Yes.
Until such time as we see whether or not that funding comes through?
Right, that's what I'm saying, that, that's
That seems like a reasonable idea.
Yeah. Yeah, see, that, that dam was replaced and after Rita. And so it's not that old.
It's low, but the surface is good.
Yeah. Except where they repaired, except where we
Except for the dam itself, now that's a different situation.
Any other questions, especially having Wayne here, I mean, thank you, Wayne, for coming out here to give us some, you know. Actually, I think what we'll do is, is make a decision at council meeting on Thursday, or Thursday, on their, whatever day it is. It's not this coming Thursday, we're just beginning in the, or we're just getting to the beginning of the month. But we did wanna look at different options, and in the meantime, Wayne, can, if you could give me an estimate on those other roads, those other, and
Yeah, I did measure that.
And is it, is it possible to tell us, okay, if you did, like, a certain portion of it, you know, up to here, it'd cost this much? Lakewood's pretty darn long. And, of course, we wanna do it all
I kinda love them, once I measured them, you know, I got each one separated at first, you know, the square yards, but I didn't do I got all of them, you know, measured the square yards each row, but I didn't do any
Yeah.
You know, to a certain point.
Okay. Thoughts, guys?
So, are we looking at, and this is a question I've had in the back of my mind for a while, are we looking at doing any, any work this season that's gonna actually require milling? Unless, unless we kick off and do something like 27th Street or, the reason I'm interested is that there are some areas out here that have either oil sand or previous asphalt or chip seal that are so bad that it makes way better sense to, if we're working on another street in the area, and the, the
Equipment is here
Cost of the equipment going over and milling something up so that we can start laying down base material and actually maintaining an area versus driving over the potholes, it certainly would be of interest, so, I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind getting a figure for if, if that type of equipment is on site, about what it costs to run and, and do, do milling work.
I can give you a daily rate for the milling machine and a dump truck and, you know, some stuff like that, but I didn't include that in this figure.
Gotcha. So, Mayor, looking at that rough estimate, and I assume that you'll have to go back and sharpen the pencil and get down to what the black and white of it'll be, but we're looking at somewhere around 800,000 in work with what's been called out?
Yes.
So that leaves, Mayor, if I'm
Easily a couple hundred thousand. We do, now, we have a grant application out that requires a 1% match, which is $100,000. We don't wanna totally deplete the, you know, that does require a match.
Right, so we're, so we're 750 in, that would leave 550?
1,250. So, yeah, I see what you're saying.
Right, so, after this proposed 800,000, that leaves about 550 minus another 100 that we need for match.
I don't, I don't know where your math is, it's 450.
450?
Yeah, 12 minus 8 is 4.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're, you're right, so
Basic math.
It's the end of the day, I've been having numbers in my head all day. So somewhere around 350 left
Yeah, I'd not like, I'd not like to cut it quite that close. But we can easily, you know, spend another couple hundred thousand. That's why I'd like Wayne to come up with the additional streets and see maybe what we can add on to this, cuz even, even a million one
Sure.
That would last, that would give us a, you know, 150,000 left in there.
I'd love to see a plan for 27th Street, and, and I'd like to see what our, what our options are, you know, as far as overall cost, if we can, if we can do a two-co, two-course chip seal and, and come out more economical that way, I think that we need to assess our options and see how far we can stretch the funds. With the figures that you're, you're bringing to the table, it's, it's really very encouraging for us to be able to, to get close to what we initially set out to do with the projects, so I'm optimistic.
Yeah, I mean, a two-course chip seal, with the way oil is, I mean, I'm not against it, I can give you a price of that, but you can, you know, you need to have a level surface to put it on what you have. You talking about putting two-course on what you have out there now?
Oh, no.
Or just other stuff?
No, I know that, I know that 27th Street would require milling
Okay.
And base work and all that stuff, so I, you know, I, I come from a, from a history out here of asphalt and blacktop as wishful thinking, cuz it's just, it's like, you know, pouring gold out on the street. Sorry about that.
Yeah.
So are you, are you saying that asphalt may actually be less expensive?
Well, I mean, in certain cases, it will be, you know, depends on what you have to do.
Gotcha.
I mean, if you gotta go out there and level it up and then put the chip seal there 'cause we're the double course, you know, you gotta do work to get that there. So, you know, or you can go out there and start leveling and paving.
Well, yeah, if, Wayne, if you could come up with your best idea of what would, you know, what would be the best way to handle 27th Street and Sir Cedric?
I can tell you that on 27th Street, I drove it yesterday, a large majority of that street's gonna have to be built, it doesn't have any base. I mean, it's, it's pretty well torn up.
Yep. So, David, do you have any comments?
Yeah, David, you mentioned, I think, 27th as one of those, talking about the milling machine and so forth out there. Friar Tuck, from the fire department
Mm.
Down to whatever that is, I can't remember right now, we came in with just a grater, dropped the teeth down, and ripped that up into small pieces, and then came back over that with road base and, and some, some of the millings that we had got off the first text dot job.
Mm.
It's holding up well.
Oh, excellent.
That pertaining to, to milling and the cost of all of that is, is something that I would like to look at. The other thing, me personally, I'm not sold on, on all the roads that we're looking at. There's some out there, I think the area, and Wayne, correct me if I'm wrong, cuz you've driven these. One of the biggest things I see wrong from Camelot down to Charmaine on Lakewood, or Ivanhoe Drive at that point, that road is still in pretty good shape. I think that the problem there are the edges. A lot of these, it's the edges that have eaten away, they were done with, with sand oil and other things, it's just slowly deteriorating and evaporating, for lack of a better word. I would like to look a little bit more carefully in that to see if, if we really have to do the entire road or, or a level up that's so involved, when we can just do something with the shoulders and then just a slight level up, maybe get some more roads done.
Well, if we had a shoulder machine, we could probably do that.
Well, we could, we could.
That's what I was gonna say. David, are you referencing Ivanhoe Drive?
Yes.
Okay, from Camelot down to Charmaine?
Right, to Shanticleer.
Oh, to Shanticleer. Oh, okay, right, I know the sections you're talking about.
Yeah, it's a big curve that drops down, yeah, yeah. The edges on that, I think, are the biggest problem. The surface itself, excuse me, seems to be The surface itself, excuse me, seems to be in pretty good shape.
You're talking about Ivanhoe Drive?
Yes.
From pretty much, uh, Galahad back up?
From, from first four-way stop to the second four-way stop.
Okay, you're talking about Camelot to
We're talking to...
Whatever that is.
Uh, to, to Shanticleer.
Camelot to Shanticleer, yeah, I did see that, that is a really good, that's a really good road, too, but if you're doing the rest of it, it's like the mayor said, you know, in order to make it look really good?
Oh, I understand.
Right.
It doesn't, it's not that much to do that.
That section, since it's such a good shape, probably wouldn't cost near as much as the other sections that are in worse shape. But overall
Right.
Uh, you know, if we nitpicking, we leave a, you know, we're, we're planning on a road that's really going to look great.
Right, right.
And then we leave a, you know, a couple blocks that are...
You know, I'm just saying, if we can rework the shoulders and not do such a, a, a deep overlay, if you will.
Ah.
I mean, the, the way the process, you know, the way I process, about a ton.
Okay, okay.
So if all you need is an inch and a half there.
Okay.
You know, I, I use three inches, because a lot of it needs leveling on one end, just, just for the sake of a budget. And
Okay.
you can get by with half of us, half the layers there.
Okay, okay. So, Wayne, do, do we actually get charged by the tonnage used? Or do you spec it out on the front end and give us a fixed quote?
I don't, I don't know how this is going, you know, going out, it, you know, I measured it for wheel and, and a truck, so that's a, an estimate, you know,
Sure, sure.
but, but a ton, you know, you're going to be pretty close, and that's why I put like a plus or minus ten percent, because it could be actually ten percent less, if you do less leveling on some.
Sure.
You know, or, you know, more on some, you know, that calls it, or you go through one area, you're going to have to overlay it.
But, I, I guess I'm just asking for
It'd be a ton, you, you know, the way you do it is get all the square yards for everywhere
Mm.
and figure the tonnage, and then if you're under it, when you get done, then
Stretch it.
Stretch it.
Another thing to think about, guys, David mentioned to me the other day how much just what we have done so far has alleviated the crew from having to do potholes constantly, and, you know, doing something like this major project uh, is going to be able to enable them to do things, like, they, they could probably tackle Twenty-seventh Street and, and, you know, and they could tackle Sir Cedric, because they'll have more time to be able to dedicate to those side roads, because they're not going to be constantly patching potholes. Makes a huge difference. Um, and what he just said just now made me think, okay, we're, we're talking about ten percent over, ten percent less. Uh, that's another thing to think about, we don't want to go way up and, and then we don't have the ten percent, you know. We have to look, look how much more it cost us on Charmaine South and, and Shanticleer more than anticipated, so...
I think, uh, you know, David talking about Friar Tuck, if you could do that on Twenty-seventh, that would save us a ton of money right there, it would cost us out of our budget, but it wouldn't be using bond funds, but, but if we did that, then we could, um, maybe look at some of these other streets that we haven't done.
You, you mentioned budget. We did today, we got in ninety-six tons. And, uh, the biggest majority of, of that was gone as soon as it hit the ground today.
I need to hear that.
I think, I think we've got about thirty, thirty-something tons left, and that was doing Camelot from Gilbert towards Gwain, and we didn't even reach Gwain, and that's spreading out about two inches thick.
Y'all are working on Camelot?
Mm-hmm.
You know, I wondered why we didn't do Camelot instead of, uh, Sir Gwain, or what?
I don't think, I don't think that there were the house tops on it.
Maybe that's what it is, but that looked to me like it'd been a better road to Prince Valley would have been another road that we could have used.
Prince Valley, that, that, that whole front, yeah, yeah, and that, that's what we're trying to get to, but ju- just that was about eight thousand dollars just today in material.
What, what material was that you're using, Dave?
Uh, the inexpensive thirty-eight dollars a yard road base.
Okay.
It works well.
It works well, it works well, and it's, it's easy to maintain, once we get it to that point, but it does cost a lot of money to get it to that point, I mean, we're talking a block and a half, and we're eight thousand dollars in one day.
And wha- what's the, the current status on that ash material and its application?
We're just waiting. That eight thousand today, we could have used the ash material that's pretty much just the cost of going and getting it.
And we're waiting on...
Okay, there was some confusion about what, where the lot is that we own. David thought it was on, uh
Pertalo.
Pertalo, and it turns out that the lot that we own is on Sir Cedric. And so, now that we know where the lot is, and we'll have to go out and look at that, then we have to get the surveyor out and get, uh, someone to clear it, but that was the hang-up.
So ha- having a place to, to stock?
To mix it, yeah.
Stock and mix.
And that's another good reason why we should be doing Sir Cedric.
Sure.
Yeah, so, um, David and I talked about that just a little while ago, because he was under the impression that, he, he had a very definite idea where that lot was, and then we looked it up and it's not that one, it's over on Sir Cedric. So what we'll do tomorrow, David?
Yes.
Is ride over and kind of figure out where that lot is, and, and once we have it figured out, we'll go ahead and order the survey, and then we'll get somebody out here to clear the lot.
Sounds good to me.
Sounds like a plan.
Do y'all use the dump truck to get that ash?
We do, we do, it's just, what, seven miles down there to the mills, or, you know, the pellet company, and then, and then back. So we can get quite a few, quite a few loads in a day.
Yeah.
If we, if we let them know that we're going to continue, they generally leave the gentleman there with the front-end loader, and he's waiting on us.
David, there was mention of, um, a potential strategy for Ivanhoe, uh, Drive East and West. What's, what's the, the possible plan there?
Do like we did on Friar Tuck, come through, rip it up with the, uh, with the maintainer
Mm.
and pack it down, come back and lay either the road base material or this, this ash, concrete, steel, ball bearings, uh, wha- whatever mixture it comes out to be. It's working extremely well, extremely well.
So, we're doing good. Now, we, do we have any more questions for Wayne, since he's standing there, we could let him sit down if he'd like to?
I'm, I'm, I'm good.
Any other thoughts or questions, while we've, while we've got the, an e- an expert here? And of course, once we, uh, once we decide on what roads we want to, to, uh, include in our work, then we'll be going out for bids.
Well, do we need, uh, Wayne to look at Twenty-seventh Street, just to give us an idea, or?
Well, I don't think it's a bad idea for him to look at it and see what he feels it would take to get it going, you know.
And, uh...
Sir Cedric.
Galahad Estates, no, no, uh, Ivanhoe Estates between Sir Robert Burns and Lakewood.
Well, that would close that loop.
It would, it's, we were going to do, don't play on that one.
Well, yeah, you guys that live on Charmaine South drive down my street.
I don't drive that way.
Huh?
I don't drive that way.
No, heavens, no.
But, that is, you know, coming around the corner, and that's where Helipad Park is, that's where Emergency Restrooms is.
Anyway, okay.
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions here that, if we want to answer them, we certainly can.
Who are they from?
Uh, just about drainage culverts and so forth.
Uh, I've asked everybody that to, to give their name and address?
I don't have that.
This is a city question.
Oh, okay, well. Okay, what is it, David?
Uh, one, uh, responsibility for cost of replacement culverts, city or property owner. Uh, when is city going to do ditch work, uh, or drainage, and encounter a problem covert, damaged culverts?
Do we know where we're talking about, or what?
No, I think it was just in general, uh, s- someone was, was wanting to know where, where we're at on this, and, and we have kind of bounced back and forth a little bit, uh, due to circumstances beyond our control, we've kind of had to revert back. Uh, we're not ready to make that leap yet, that the city will jump back in and do all of the culverts. Uh, but normally, and correct me if I'm wrong, normally if it's a replacement covert, especially one that's gone bad, uh, we usually take that on. If it's a new covert, that's definitely the property owner's responsibility. Uh, if it's something that we're doing that pertains to better drainage, that's probably something we will jump in and do. Uh, the other one about, uh, encounter a problem covert, uh, one of those we've encountered just recently to give an example. Uh, there was an issue, we went, we looked at it, we couldn't see, everything was silted in, we blew it out completely, and there was about a three-inch root growing from front to back, right through the middle of it. Uh, that's one, and it was an old tin horn. That would be what I would consider a replacement at, at the city's cost for the, the city's drainage.
Is this driveway?
Yes, yes, yes. Yeah, and I know we've been talking this way, that way, this way, that way, but if, if I'm correct in my thinking, I, I think that's where we're at now.
I don't think a decision was ever made.
I don't think it was either, we've just kind of done what we used to do before we, we started this, and then it went south.
Yeah.
But, that would be my take on it.
Yeah.
Hope that answered the question, whoever sent it in.
Well, I don't know that it does, it sounds like it's a question that's open in all the table, that at some point in time we need to resolve and create a, an actual policy for that's repeated.
But I, it's not on the agenda.
And that's fine, I'm just stating that it's...
Yeah, well, I don't want to go too far off the agenda.
Fair enough.
But, yeah, we can put that on the agenda, because that's not, uh... The questions we need to look at right now are, are the only things that we can address, or things on the agenda, people are, are able to voice their comments, but we can't, uh, if it's not on the agenda, we can't discuss it. Um, is there any further discussion regarding this, uh, street work? Okay, moving right along, uh, item number two, council discussion of twenty-twenty-one, uh, twenty-two Texas Community Development Block Grant Projects. Our grant administrator contacted us the other day to ask what it was that we wanted, we did say we wanted, you know, we were going to apply. Uh, there's different options for application, Tommy was in on this, this conversation the other day, we, um, we can do they said if it's a, a street like off the beaten path, like we did in the back this last time, you do have to do the survey, if it's something that serves the entire community and that can kind of be proven, then we don't have to do the door-to-door survey. Now, we've done surveys before, we know how to do them, so, uh, the, the, uh, example that they gave of, of projects that would, uh, serve the entire community would be something like a park, or, um...
Playground.
Well, you know, playground, that's, that's kind of like a park, um, or like a, an entrance street or something, but, uh, that would serve basically most of the population. But, um, anyway, what we're going to have to decide at council meeting is where we want to go with the project, what type of project we'd like to apply for. This year is going to be three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The Durwood project was CDBG, and always in the past, it's been two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And out of that two hundred and seventy-five thousand, of course, there was the grant administration and the engineering. Now, it's three, up to three hundred and fifty, but you have to have a thirty-five thousand dollar match. So, it's changed the ballgame a little bit, but it's, uh, but that's the way it is for this come, this upcoming, uh, period. And they said that any type of project would qualify, because in the past, they've said, okay, this year is going to be infrastructure, or this year is going to be drainage, or this year is going to be parks, or, you know, whatever, they, they've come up with basic, uh, plan, or not ideas on what you could do, uh, or categories, and this year is just open to pretty much anything that, any project that, that we wanted to undertake. And Ivanhoe in general is fifty-seven percent low to mod, so that's why they were saying that if it's something that serves the entire community, we don't have to go door-to-door, but if it's something that's, you know, back off, off the beaten path, then we would. But like I said, we've done that before, we know how to do it, we're experts. Um, anyway. Tommy, do you have any other comments about that?
Uh, no, not really.
Okay, anyway. Uh, CD, how many, how many grants have we gotten through TDA in the past six years? Second portion of Durwood and the fire. Yeah, we're... Yeah. See, this takes off points, so, you know, the likely, we, you know, we're not, we're, we're not really likely, well, I shouldn't say that, we could, because the grant administrator said the thing about this year is there's more money in the pot than there has been in the past. So that means there's more grants going to be given than there, there have been in the past. But it, because in the past, if you've gotten, if you'd gotten a grant in the last period, then, then that would take off like twenty points. And that would just really, you know, disqualify you pretty much from, from the competition. The grant administrators feel like there still is a possibility, because there's more money in the pot. So, hey, we have to apply. You can't win the lottery unless you buy a ticket. So, so, uh, and this is something that we'll look at at city council meeting, I just wanted to throw it out there so that, uh, council can think about it.
So if we apply, we may not get it, but if we don't apply, we're guaranteed to not get it.
Exactly, exactly, so the wisest thing to do is apply, because you never know. You know, the, the first time that Durwood, the first portion of Durwood, we applied in two thousand and twelve, we didn't get it until later on, CD. It was like somebody else didn't, what happened? Because we weren't in the first round of...
Usually it's the top seventeen that are writing.
Yeah.
Out of thirty-four, thirty-six.
Uh-huh. Yeah, and for some reason, that first time, we didn't think we were going to get it, and then we finally did. Yeah, anyway. Okay, I, that's all for this portion of the, of our evening or afternoon. It is five thirteen, do I hear a motion to adjourn the workshop?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now, what we're going to do is reconvene our meeting that we started at four twenty-five P.M., and it is now...